Well, welcome to our afternoon session of the Tuesday State Board of Education meeting for August. First on our afternoon agenda is to receive a report on the summer academies and standards implementation. I see lots of faces here to talk to us. I know this will be very fun and informative. Scott Smith, Jeanette Nobbo, and guests.
... present this to all of you today. As always, it's going to be a lot better because you're not going to really hear from me. You're going to hear from the teachers who are in the field and who have been implementing this. So with us today, we have Julie Akins. She is with Chanute and she represents English Language Arts for us here. Lisa Blair, who is with the Greenbush Education Service Center, and she is working with the science standards, so you will hear from her as well. Alisa Dorian, who is with Lansing School District, and she's representing mathematics. And Lori Rice, who is with Romigo and is representing History Government and Social Studies, or like we like to call it HUGS. I don't know why, but... Also, what we're going to do is just give you a brief overview of the summer academies since their implementation, what we have done around training teachers to get this really going. Then we're going to talk about this year's summer academy. And then lastly, each one of them is going to talk about how they're being implemented in the schools. And for those of you who do not know me, I'm Jeanette Nobbo. I am the Assistant Director with the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards. So with you, I'm going to leave Julie, who's going to start off?
Thanks, KSD, for inviting me to be part of this. The staff and the presenter's names are listed up there again on that slide. And I'm going to just give you a quick history and timeline. And I passed out a timeline for each of you. We started in 2010 after the standards were adopted. To just give some background on the college and career-ready standards, a process that went into developing those with the Kansas 15%. And that first one was for math and ELA only. And at that summer academy, we talked about the appendices, the standards themselves, how to read them, the publisher's criteria, the instructional changes that might take place. We also talked about key phrases that teachers would need to be alert to. And so that was just an awareness session. And then for 2011, we started the implementation session. Districts brought teams to that summer academy, and we focused on those key areas of instructional change. We also focused, in my opinion, part of the best part of that summer academy was the change process itself, and what are the steps in change, and what to look for, and how to help people move through a change process. And again, that was for math and ELA. And then the classroom implications for change and what those new standards might require. And then districts had time, those district teams had time at that summer academy to actually prepare an implementation plan if they hadn't already done so. And then in 2012, we talked about the key areas of change in the curriculum. That was for math and ELA again. And we added the scaffolding practices and what we would do to implement the rigor, the level of rigor that was required, and productive struggle. And then in 2013, that focus was on instructional practices. So those were content-specific, math and ELA, and we just focused on practical teaching strategies and ideas to implement those in the classroom. And then we introduced the social, emotional, and character development standards. Then you'll hear more about the actual summer academy this year, but just an overview of it. This year, our focus was on formative assessment and content integration. And then we continued to address math and ELA. We introduced HUGS and the science standards. We introduced ELL and ELP standards in world languages. We added the administrator strand this year. We continued SECD and social, emotional, and character development. And our focus, main focus, on all of those was not only the content standards, but what does formative assessment look like, and what are the components to effective formative assessment, and how do we integrate the content to make it best for all of our students? So that's in a nutshell, the background. And Lisa is going to come up and share the training.
Okay, so I'm just going to talk about the training at the presenters. This started in 2011, and there's a model that we used, and I'm going to talk about that on the next slide a little bit. The participants, there was a wide variety. There were teachers there, there were service centers, we had principals, special education staff. So it wasn't just teachers or just your administration, it was a huge variety. I know that, she already talked about this a little bit, but in 2011, the training really has shifted quite a bit. In 2011, it was a lot of the connections with MTSS and special education. In 2012, it was really the content for our math and ELA. And then finally, this year, we got into the math, science, history, government. So we combined all those core subjects in there. We also use the learning forward model with the standards. I'm going to speak about that in just a second. The training of trainers, the way that they decided on who they would have to be trainers is they selected it based off nominations. So someone nominated you, and then from there, you had to answer a survey, and that's how they narrowed down who they were going to train. After we were selected and we went to a training that was three days long, they focused on certain domains, and we really went in depth, because that's how we want our teachers to teach. So we don't want them to just know all the domains, we want them to know them in depth. The learning forward format, it's a professional development standards, and the KSD, they use them pretty frequently. But this did allow for our standards to be properly focused, so that it just wasn't all everywhere. It is a program, so that means that it's ongoing, it's coherent, and it's student achievement-based. So it's not just an event where it's occasional and disconnected. And this is just kind of a brief summary of that format. So now I'm going to let Lori talk to you guys about the summer academy.
Summer academy this year was different in the fact that we wanted to get teachers together and help them to collaborate, because that's really what it's all about in education now. So we had Derby in June, Highland Park, Topeka in July, and Abilene at the end of July were the locations, allowing teachers to choose any of those. I know in our Abilene session, we had a teacher that purposefully lived closer to Topeka, but she chose the Abilene session so that she could network with new teachers, which is a really fun and a really important aspect of the summer academies as well, to get teachers out there sharing the things they do in their rooms and sharing their knowledge. This is an example of the things that we asked the teachers to do. We wanted them to understand the shifts that were in their standards. And again, those were across curriculums this year. We went into history government, social studies, and science as well. We wanted them to be able to discuss these standards as well as practice teaching them. And we did a lot of modeling of strategies that are really helpful for students, and tried to model really good teaching skills, and helping them understand the timeline of implementation and what that means for them in their classrooms. Some common ideas is that our standards are now process-based, and we really want to move teachers away from what's the assessment, what is assessed, what's it look like, into what is on my curriculum and how do I make that meaningful for my students? Integrating the areas is an important way to do that. We wanted them to be student-focused and really put students in the center of their learning, and put teachers there to facilitate. And so all of that was discussed and modeled at the academy. It's kind of like the difference between mining and archaeology. We're still teaching standards. Everything's still the same, but the tools and the way you're looking at it is different. In mining, you kind of look for that one nugget, that one important thing, and you hone down into that. But in archaeology, as you're going, you look at the surroundings, you take into account where you are, and what was happening, and what the culture was like. And that's really what we're wanting teachers to help students learn, is that if I'm looking at a math standard, I'm not only looking at this is the way you follow the standard and this is how you get to the answer, I'm looking at how that develops and what that looks like to each individual student. And so we've taught our kids that this is gold, but what we want them to remember is that this is also gold. And we don't want to make them believe that there's only one right answer. And so that was an important thing during academies. Primary source documents were looked at, especially with my social studies, which I did, really getting those into the hands of teachers, into the hands of students. And we're talking about our kinders as well. So we showed kindergarten teachers how you can use photographs, and you can use maps, and you can use illustrations to make that history come alive in your classrooms with your kids. And even the five-year-olds love to see this, and they love to make those connections. And so that was a really fun part, to open that up to teachers and let them see there are tons of resources out there that bring this alive in our classroom. Day three was really fun. A lot of teachers came with a really open mind and really embraced this, and some teachers came a little leery. And it was a process to help them walk through and see what this was to look like. They were broken up into teams and really wanted the importance of having different curriculum across the team levels. If schools came as a group, those groups were obviously kept together so that they could have that collaboration time. We gave them the essential question of how do you solve world hunger, but they could develop their own. I did teach at all three academies, and it was fairly evenly split. Some groups went with, yes, how can I solve world hunger? And they really grasped onto that. One of my groups wanted to switch it over to energy and the energy crisis, because that was a focus they had in their school. And so it was open to teachers, which I think really helped them embrace what we were asking them to do. The learning outcomes for that day was we wanted them to collaborate within and across districts. So if they were there with others from their school, we wanted that to happen. But we also wanted them to connect up with other schools and other teachers to make connections, reflect and adjust on what they're doing that works really well, because we're all doing things that are great, but how could they push themselves just a little bit more to add more into their classrooms? Examine what content integration looks like and actually practice that. The best way to do something is to do it. And so we asked them to do that. We set up a space that was safe for them to do that, and we had people that were there to answer their questions and give them immediate feedback, which we know is important in learning, so that they could become successful. And then we asked them to develop a plan that they could take back with them that was meaningful to their school, their kids, their classroom, and have a start to springboard off into sometime during this next school year. So here's an example of one of my group's feedback. I apologize for the tiny print, but what we had them do was brainstorm all the content areas that fell into what they were teaching. And again, we really tried to have a representative from science, a representative from ELA, a representative from math. So we had our experts in there. And then they thought of questions that fell under the idea of how do we solve world hunger? So you can look at that with inventions. Inventions are going to be a solution in our world hunger problem. Are there any challenges that can't be overcome that can go into a physical education component? And so they brainstormed those, worked together, gave group feedback, and all the teachers then had access to this document, so they had everything to take back with them. From there, we gave them time to work, and they went out and they researched. So for art and music, how does fine arts affect world change? These were some great things that they found that could be used in the classroom. And so again, they have this document that they took back with them, so if I teach music, I can give this to the math teacher and say, hey, we found this really cool stuff, maybe you want to use it, can I talk to you about it? And it also opened up the door of communication once they went back into their own schools and own classrooms. We did use Twitter, and so here's just some samples of some of the things that were shared throughout the conferences. KSDeepDive was our handle there that we used. And lots of samples, lots of excitement that was going on, lots of collaboration that third day, which was really fun to see as educators.
Science next? Okay. So I'm going to talk about the implementation of the standards. Specifically, I will be talking to you about the science standards. So we had a team that came together, and like the other discipline areas, we had an opportunity to pull together and look at a shell and what that training would look like at the K-12 levels. This was our first year at a summer academy because of the science area, so it was truly a learning experience. And I don't hesitate to say that all three areas, elementary, middle, and high school, we made adjustments as the summer went on. As you can see from the numbers, we had about 100 teachers attend our sessions. The thing about the teachers who attended the science sessions this year, I feel that they were so committed to science and really want to make that change in their classrooms and help students understand what it's like to have a deeper, better understanding of science. So we had really some amazing people who attended our sessions. One of the things we really focused on from the very beginning of our training on day one is the individual vision that each of our science educators had in the area of science. And we took that vision, we wrote it down, we talked about it as a group. And then throughout the training sessions, we just kept going back to that vision to make sure that we were headed in the right direction with everyone. One of the things we did in the session is we encouraged people to read the executive summary from the K-12 Framework for Science Education. And we really felt like in going through that executive summary and then talking a little bit about the book, that it was helping people have a better understanding. And when I get to the next slide, I'll read a quote in regards to that. Throughout the session, we did several grade-level appropriate lessons or activities to help people understand the structure of the framework of the new standards, what the phenomenon looked like, what it was like to take those three dimensions of learning, the practices, the DCIs, and the cross-cutting concept, and how you weave those together to make this a really strong standards-based program. So that was really great, and the collaboration that was taking place when the teachers were talking about the lessons, how they could implement things like what we were doing in their classrooms, was really exciting. For a lot of the people, and I worked specifically with the K-5 group, we spent a lot of time just looking at the standards and how to read the standards and how to use those resources, because we had everything from, I haven't even seen the standards, and I'm completely and totally overwhelmed and almost in tears, to the people on the other end of it who had spent some time in their district looking at the standards. So it was a real experience having people at both ends of the spectrums in your sessions and what you could do to help people feel more comfortable reading the standards and what that meant when they took them back to the classroom. In our sessions, it was also interesting because we had classroom teachers, we had curriculum leaders, and we had administrators. In our elementary session, we had middle school teachers, we had high school teachers. In the high school sessions, there were elementary teachers because they wanted to learn more about the content. So there were really people in all over the spectrum in each of the sessions, and I thought that was really interesting. But we really talked a lot about how we can take what we're currently doing, and maybe we don't have to completely reinvent the wheel with our lessons, how we can collaborate, work across the board, both vertically and horizontally in our district, and become true collaborators for working with the science instruction. But the implementation phase was a big part of what we worked with, and how we can take what we learned in the academies back to the school and work with other teachers and administrators, and what needed to happen at that level. So we worked on some lesson development and spent a lot of time on that, and just made sure that what we were doing aligned to the new standards. We also had some quotes that we pulled out. One of them, "Thank you for all your help in understanding the new standards, they're starting to make sense." I thought that was really good. And I'm seeing how to apply them in my classroom from one of the participants, one of our trainers. "I had a great time at these sessions and think the teachers I spoke with received some valuable professional development," and I agree with that as well as the trainer. "As I read chapters on the three dimensions, I finally hit the aha moment." Thanks for suggesting the read. So hitting that aha moment for me and hearing that was like just super. So we're really, with our agency at Greenbush, we're really working hard to take the labs that we offer and the ways that we help teachers, and we really want to become models so we can help teachers understand how you implement these standards in the classroom, what it looks like, and how to work with teachers. So in addition to the summer academies, we have other trainings planned, and we hope to take components of the summer academies and branch out and hit additional teachers and help share that professional development. Corey?
As far as the implementation, we wanted to tell you some of the things that are happening in our classrooms this year. Well, Mago granted our teachers some time at the end of May, and we came back after the paperwork, after the checklist, after the checkouts, and we focused just on integrating these standards. And so I provided for you, I apologize, my number was wrong in my head and I only had 10 copies, but I did provide for you a couple of samples of what we're going to be taking back to our fourth graders. One in science is life cycles, and we, the standards have shifted, but what we've done is tried to tie that into ELA, so really meaningful writing activities, reading activities, and teaching kids how to read that technical writing, which we know is important. So the students will get the packet versus a textbook, and what we will then provide for them are activities and technology components and things for them to do, but I thought that was a way for you to take a peek into what they were doing. With the social studies, we created the Trails packet as well. And so what we did is as a fourth grade team, we sat down, we looked at the resources we had that were good, that met our needs, we found things that we needed more of, and we put those together, again, for students to see primary source documents. There'll be mapping activities and things they do on top of this, but this is just kind of a skeleton of what that unit's going to look like for those kiddos. Another thing we were able to do is we could find box sets. Now, being a new thing, this is kind of new to the publishers, and we never want to be driven by publishers, so we looked very carefully at what things were out there and what things were available. And we were able to find some things that meshed up well. So we did find a geology unit, and we found a Native American unit, and we purchased those, so we will also have teacher guides that will implement some of the units as well for us. Having that time to collaborate, to look at the assessments, to make some common assessments, to talk about how do you go through and timeline this, how do I know my students understand this science inquiry as I'm going through, what does that look like in my classroom? What does it look like in the classroom down the hall? Was a really huge component, and that's really big with that collaboration piece. So that's a way that USD 320 has brought that in, and it's really exciting to see how that's going to impact our students. I also know at our eighth grade level, we have a social studies and an English Language Arts teacher that have created a unit together, and so they'll be co-teaching it. So if I go to social studies for class, when I get to my English Language Arts class, it piggybacks right on top of what's going on there. And it's so exciting to see how that's going to be so meaningful for students and open up their eyes to what's going on, and to help them see that this is the world, this is what we do, and this is how thinking and learning work, versus, I have social studies, I have math, I have science, I have language arts. And I think it will just boost their learning and their inquisitiveness, and that's really what we want to do to our students.
In 2010 and 2011, those first two academies, there was an overwhelming concern about what are the assessments going to look like? What are the assessments going to look like? What are the assessments going to look like? And this year, when we were to our, the ELA focus for this year was on writing and content integration, research, some of those pieces, speaking and listening, some of the other segments of the standards that we had not covered in great detail before. And this year, when we were talking about what the writing assessment might look like, it was, oh, okay. And so that, there's been that nice shift from this over-concern with the assessments to what does quality instruction look like in my classroom, and how can I do this better? And less, with less concern about what the assessment will look like. So quality instruction leads to good achievement, and that's a nice change to see. Right at the end of that last academy, there was a group who came in to ask us questions. And right at the very end, the facilitator of our particular group had us go around and talk about our own home situations, school situations. And so I was listening to the other eight or nine situations, and they were all different, and they were all at various stages of implementation. And then I said, I feel really proud to be able to say that I think Chanute USC 413 could be a model of how to do it right. Because from the very beginning, our administration has been on board. They provide a week after school is out, that first week after school is out, the teachers come back to do planning and work on instruction, instructional planning. They get days during the year that they do both vertical alignment and horizontal curriculum alignment. They get pre-school, before school, in-service days on topics that are focus topics for our district. And then during the year, the puzzle pieces are in order. The district leadership team stems down to the principal's leadership team, into individual PLC groups, and it's just, it just is working well for our district. So that made me feel really proud to be able to say that. And some of you have some firsthand experience with the summer academy, so a couple of you have been in and were actually there this year in my session, so that's exciting too. I just feel, I feel confident with these standards that, in ELA, the teachers are confident. What I'm seeing across the state is that teachers are confident, they understand text complexity, they're looking for ways to add rigor, they're looking for ways to better their practice. They're just, they're just conscious of quality instruction, and that's, that's just such a wonderful thing to see. So I think it's going to be a really, really good thing for Kansas kids. And this is my slogan that I use this year. I'd like my own district to adopt it, but I haven't convinced them yet. Maybe the state can adopt it. This is a slogan that I use this year right at the end. "The world better be ready for Kansas students," because we're going to have Kansas students ready for the world. So thank you.
All right, next I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit about math. I'm going to start off just talking about the summer academy with math and then go into Lansing School District. The focus, we did K through six, and it was number sense, and they included whole numbers and fractions in that. And they also went into the domain of operations and algebraic thinking. For six through 12, we really focused on ratios and proportions as well as functions. And the reason why there is such a huge grade span, because a lot of times you see like K through two, and then three through five, and then middle school and high school, but the reason why we made larger grade spans is because we really need to know where our students have been and where they're going in order to teach effectively. It's no longer, I'm an eighth grade teacher, and these are the standards that I have to teach. It's, I'm an eighth grade teacher, and I am responsible for everything that they've been taught before this, and I'm responsible for preparing them for everything they're going to learn in high school. So it's a different shift in focus. It's not just my little island of eighth grade any longer. We also talked about the eight math practices, and I just put them up there in like one or two words for you, just kind of a brief summary of each one. And these are different practices that we're supposed to use daily in our classrooms. It doesn't mean that you're going to use every single one every day, but you should be hitting them pretty frequently. Different things that I've been hearing in the field for the summer academy, a lot of people really, really enjoyed the first two days. It was content-based. A lot of the math teachers, I think that they, they're a little scared going into the Common Core, to be completely honest. And so those first two days, they really, I think they really learned a lot. And one of the things that they really learned is they learned multiple entry points into teaching different things. So there's not just one right way to get somewhere. You have different tools for different students, so you're teaching all those different tools. So you know, if a student doesn't understand one way to do it, you have a different way to help them get there. So I think teachers seeing that and understanding that the how of getting to the answer to a problem is just as important as the final answer. Common Core readiness, I think people are still maybe a little bit shaky, but they really think that they are wrapping their heads around it. They think they have a lot of work to do, but they're starting to understand the Common Core, which if you don't understand it, you can't go anywhere. So we really have the basis there. For Lansing School District, the elementary and the high school, they've adopted Common Core textbooks already. And the middle school, we haven't quite gotten to that point, because when it was our adoption year, the Common Core wasn't complete yet, so we decided to go a different route. We began by, we have Common Plan Times at the middle school, and so during our Common Plan Time every single day, the other eighth grade teacher and I, we read through the whole Common Core, and we noted the similarities and differences from what we were currently teaching and what needed to be taught. So that was really good to see those similarities and differences. After we did that, though, a lot of people think that they're finished, they know the Common Core. But the big document that a lot of people are just now learning about, and a lot of people learned about them through the summer academy, are the progressions. And the progressions are not just telling you what you're teaching, but they're telling you how to teach them. They're telling you how to teach in depth. So after we went through the Common Core, we went through the progressions to learn how to teach everything thoroughly. Once we got to that point, we felt pretty good about ourselves, we'd done a lot of reading, we attempted to go more in-depth with the Common Core, but we knew that we couldn't do everything at once, that's overwhelming. So we decided on a few chapters or a few lessons where we really went Common Core all out on those few chapters or those few lessons. Once we got to that point, we started focusing on how we're teaching and not just what we're teaching. So we've been doing that all along, but this summer, I really feel like the teachers that I teach with really, really just dove into that. Every single middle school teacher, including, well, sorry, math middle school teacher, including our special education teachers, with the exception of one, attended the summer academy. So everybody's on the same page now. After we did that, we also, all of us, I think, like two or three weeks ago, we all went to a Common Core presentation on the how to teach. And, sorry, I was going to just talk about this, and then I remembered I had this little poster. So this little poster, it just talks about the different quadrants of learning. And what I really like is on the side, it has Bloom's Taxonomy. That is vocabulary that we're already used to. So the quadrant that... So, the quadrant that most kids are actually learning in right now is just quadrant B. Students are working. I'm teaching you something, and you're mimicking it. So, how well do you really understand that information? You can just copy what I did on the board. That's it. You're not really understanding it. What we really need to get our kids to do is get into quadrant D, which means that the students are thinking and they're working. And if you notice, the Bloom's taxonomy on the side there, it goes up, the levels of, the level of taxonomy goes up as you switch your quadrants. So I think that's really important to note there. The artifact that I've been working on, and keep in mind, maybe the development of this would be the same, but the artifact at the very end, the final product, will be different for every building and maybe for every single grade level. The way that we first started is I looked at all my domains, and I separated every single domain into a unit. And then once I got there, I knew that I needed to separate my clusters, so I separated my clusters into whatever domain they fit under nicely. Once we had done that, we went through our textbooks, which are old textbooks, we don't have all the Common Core information in there, but I found out which lessons do we have that are Common Core? What can I use that I've already used in the past? So, I found out what lessons I already have that support that, and then I had to find additional resources for anything that was Common Core that I had not currently been teaching or not in-depth enough. The big thing that we worked on this summer was finding real-world problems, and also problem-solving activities that are specific, and I put them under the correct domain and the correct cluster. The very last thing I did, which this was really hard for me, is we had to figure out what items we needed to review from the past, and in the past, we spent a lot of time reviewing, like a whole month, maybe more than that, and we had to cut that down to a week or two. But really, we should be sharing new knowledge with our students, not just reviewing old knowledge. We have been talking about the math practices a lot within our school district, but everybody's incorporating them differently. So, me personally, I'm choosing one problem a day where my students have to justify, they have to explain in their best mathematical vocabulary, how they did a problem and why they did it. They can't just say, that's what I saw up on the board. They have to explain why they are doing it. We're also doing perseverance problem-solving days, which that will happen at a minimum one time a week. I'm facilitating more on those days. They will, it'll either be a recap of something I've previously covered, or it will be created so that it'll be kind of a discovery knowledge for something I'm getting ready to teach. One success story about that is, I was kind of nervous about it at first. I thought, how are my kids going to do this? And honestly, they hated it at first, because I started it last year, they hated it. But I read them a story, and for eighth graders, I was surprised, they loved it, Jim and the Beanstalk. And at the end of the story, I just said, I had these giant handprints all around the walls. And I said, I found his handprints, but I need to know how tall the giant is. And they said, what? And I said, I don't know anything else. I need to know how tall he is. And that's, the rest of the day, I just facilitated. They were in groups. It was actually a skill that they had learned in seventh grade and something they were working on in science. It was not something that I had taught, but it's something that they had been taught in the past that they needed in order to understand slope really well. So, from there, we spent the whole day, and they really struggled at first, but out of 17 groups, 16 of them were able to get there, and they all got there in different ways. But they were all able to get to the right answer. So, and a lot of the kids at the end really loved it, because they were like, you know, it was just, they got to work with their groups, they got to work with each other, they got to figure it out on their own. It wasn't me marking like, you missed this step, like, you're figuring it out your own way. The way that I assessed that is the next day, so they were taking notes that whole day with their group. The next day, they were by themselves, and they could take their notes with them. And at the very top, they were to show me all the math that they did. The next section, they had to write it in words and explain how they found the answer. And then on the back, they were supposed to illustrate what they did in class the previous day, and they were supposed to be able to explain it to someone younger than them. So, I was like, pretend like you're doing this for like a first grader. You know, like, I need little pictures, a little diagram for everything. And then when I graded them, I noticed, you know, some kids, they really couldn't do the math part, but they could explain that in words like nothing else. So, they still knew how to do the problem, they just had, they just needed the words to be able to do it. And that's something that's going to be great with the new assessments, if we get to that point, is your students that can't show it one way, they're going to be able to show it a different way and still get the points and still get the right answers. So, I just wanted to sum that up with a little success story that I had personally. This right here is actually what I'll be looking at this year that has everything lined up for me, but this is what eighth grade's using, it's not what sixth and seventh grader is using. Their, their maps look completely different than mine. So, and that's just one page of it, it's really long, that's why I didn't print it out for you. And thank you guys very much for letting us present to you. Do you guys have any questions or anything for any of us?
I did, and maybe other folks will think of some. How would you respond to the criticism we hear so often that our Kansas college and career standards are resulting in a dumbing down of the curriculum?
That's, that's not true.
Step up to the mic so we can hear you.
I think for that, it's important for parents to understand the shift in the classroom that's occurring. I had this conversation with a parent last year over math in fourth grade. He was very concerned that his daughter was doing math differently than he had understood it, and I tried to explain to him that it's a process now, and so it is going to look different, and I think it's just really important to have that communication and share with parents that we're teaching them to think and to problem-solve and to do these things without assistance, whereas before, the classroom heavily relied on giving them assistance. You would have scripted directions you needed to follow, you would have scripted a formula you needed to plug numbers into. And so what we're doing is letting them discover this with guidance, and therefore making meaning of it, and they're going to have that retention a lot longer than they would have just following a recipe. So I think just open communication and sharing things out is probably the best way to tackle that myth that we're dumbing things down, because we're not, we're actually amping up a whole lot.
Moving from quadrant B to quadrant D.
Absolutely. With good scaffolding, so that all the kids, so that all the kids get there. And since I do ELA, I always, my standard response is reading standard number 10, which says, we want our students to read increasingly complex texts independently and proficiently. How can anyone not want that for their, for our students? We want them to be citizens who are ready to work in the world. So, and, and we are teaching at those higher levels of rigor, and the kids are learning more, and they're rising to those standards. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a good thing, it's a good thing.
Well, I'll address the science side of things, and since we're new, we know there are going to be questions and concerns, and so we're really going to try to work hard with the communities and offer some parent science nights, so they have a better understanding of what the new science standards are like, and take them through some activities so they understand that kids really have to think their way through the process, and they'll have a deeper understanding, but it's going to be some educating on, on our end as well.
Thank you.
For math, I know that kids are really going to have to start understanding why they are doing things. For example, I'm sure all of you remember learning cross-muliply and divide. But can any of you tell me why you cross-muliply and divide? Probably because some sixth grade or seventh grade teacher told you that's how you do it, and it doesn't matter if it's an equal sign right there, you're cross-muliplying and dividing. But if we really are teaching unit rate, if we're really teaching what those symbols really mean, those students would be, I mean, they have several different ways they can find the answer now. They could find the unit rate, and then they could multiply, because multiplying is the opposite of dividing, or they could be using ratio tables, or they can use double number lines. So, for so long, we've heard that people learn in different ways. Not everybody can memorize some formula. So really, for those visual learners, I really believe that math is really, really considering that. For kids that need to know why, and there are a lot of kids nowadays, they don't understand unless, unless you can tell them why. And in the past, we kind of skipped over that, and now we're really digging deep and we're really, we're telling them why, we're making them tell us why. So, I mean, I would definitely think that it would be more complex rather than less.
So, not dumbing down, but moving to higher levels of thinking maybe is, but it's very much misunderstood, I think. Other questions? Sally Cobble, your name's been up here for a long time, did you know that? Did you have a question? Sally Cobble.
I had a question, starting with the first speaker, I think.
Your computer wasn't there.
I know. I just left wanting to leave it there. First of all, I just want to thank you all for the presentation today. I personally needed that, this presentation, coming off of an election cycle in which got terribly beat up on Common Core. We did not start and educate the public right. We, we made a lot of mistakes, and we have a lot to make up for. So I hope as we go forward with the science standards, like you said, in holding nights for the parents to come, make them aware that there's changes. But there's a few things that I have learned along the way, that as you go and you, oh, as, as we go along and we, this is what the public doesn't understand, because we speak in an educational language, that they don't know the vocabulary. And so as we bring these parents in and we speak to them, sometimes we might have to demonstrate, or we might have to use different vocabularies. Let's start with instructional change. Is instructional change the same as how I teach? You know, some of them, they, they don't understand that there's instructional change. You might have to explain that. I wished I would have had the ability to say, well, we used to teach it this way, or we use this instructional change, but now we are using this instructional change. They have no idea what it looked like in the beginning, only what they had growing up. And so, they may have had one form, and now we're talking about another. They don't know when we talk about in-depth. Well, haven't you always taught my child what they needed to know? So they don't really get the terminology of in-depth. And collaboration, well, you guys have a teacher's lounge, don't you collaborate all the time? But what are you doing when you're collaborating? You know, what, what are the issues that you're talking about? Of course, you hit that one on the assessments on, they don't know the difference between an assessment and a test, and evidently, we have a lot of teachers that have a lot of high anxiety about wanting their, to know what their, their students learn and what they don't. A teacher should never have anxiety about a test that their children are going to take. They should want to know where that student stands, and I've never really understood that except they're scared of punishment, which we've taken away, and somehow we didn't get that across. And, you know, a lot of our criticism has been about textbooks. The textbooks haven't been adopted, or they haven't been developed enough, so how can you teach without a textbook? And, do these textbooks that are being adopted, do they teach in the manner of your progression? What's progression? You know, we talk in a whole different language than Main Street America, and I guess it'd be a lot like a, an engineer coming in and explaining something to me is different. I'm not saying this in a critical format, but I have to go out and explain back to the public what we're doing. I need help.
I'd like.
I need help with that vocabulary. I need help on talking to people where they're at, and I only can get that help from you guys.
I often use the analogy or comparison to a doctor's office. It's not much different. When you go into a doctor's office, there are certain procedures that you have come to expect. It's standard operating procedure that they're going to take your height, your weight, your blood pressure, they're going to ask you about your medications, they're going to do standard of care, and that's just standard operating procedure. Those are the standards of care, and that's exactly what the standards are. They are this, they are the standards. In a doctor's office, the standards of care, taking your blood pressure, your height, your weight, checking your medications, doesn't limit or inhibit the doctor's individual diagnosis, or prescription, or evaluation of your particular medical needs. And that standard of care that you would receive in the doctor's office based on the reason you're there, is built around the information that, from that original set of standards. And that's exactly what we're doing. The standards are just that, they're the standards. We are looking at the standards and building the curriculum using whatever we choose to, I mean, the best things that we can find to teach that curriculum. And it's, I mean, that's all, that's all they are, is a standard, is just a standard set of.
I often say, well, it's what you want taught is the standard, and then what you use to teach that.
Yes, that's, that's ours.
Yes. But I, I just want to caution you that when you start talking to, to parents and to the community, that they think it sounds good, but they have no idea what we're talking about. And, so, I don't know how we're going to communicate, but I want to thank you, because you kind of gave me affirmation for fighting.
Yes.
You know, you know, I'll, I'll stay in there and I'll fight for a good thing, but they don't understand what we're talking about.
And in regards to that, I think you hit the nail on the head, it's communication, and we haven't always done that. We've assumed parents know, or we've assumed parents don't want to know, and that wasn't okay. Last year, we had a gathering, and we invited someone to talk about Common Core math, that evil Common Core math, and we had a great turnout of parents. They were allowed to ask questions, and their questions were answered. And I know I had a personal friend who was gung-ho geared up on, this is evil awful stuff, and why are they teaching us? I've got a kindergartner, I just preciously released him into the school system, and what are they going to do to him? And his questions were answered, and he saw that these things are important, these things are good, these things are going to grow him as a person, and this is where you want your student to be. And so, providing things like that where we can invite the public in and say, what questions do you have, and let us show you what we're doing, and I think that's an important piece of it that we've missed for a while, and I know our district is trying to do that, and I'm sure other districts across the state are trying to pull that piece in better as
Kathy Bush.
Madam Chair. You know, when the, in, on the math piece, when you talked about the perseverance, the district where I worked, we used to talk about that as struggle time.
Yeah.
Because too many of our kids, the way they used to be taught was there was one way to do math.
Right.
And the teacher would grade the math problem, and if they skipped a step, it was wrong, even if they got the right answer. And the idea that the kids can now really can understand why you invert and multiply, like you mentioned, but they do have to go through that struggle time or that perseverance, and they struggle with doing that because they want the right answer. So, I just think it's great that you're talking about that, and, you know, it kind of tags into the next thing I want, which I want to tag off of what Sally said, you know, as far as our parents are concerned. And I don't know, maybe this is something KSD can do, because I think the way we get the information out to our parents is one school at a time. And if we could have some information or some materials that are available to each elementary school or whatever, when they have math night, or they have their reading night, they have some simple information, and maybe it's available, I don't know, but they have some information that's available in that parent-friendly language.
Right.
And maybe again partnering with PTA, I know Tammy, Tammy's not here, but they've got some good materials. Because that's the way we're going to get our information out, is one school at a time, because there is a lot of misinformation out there. So, and if there's materials out there, but something that can be shipped out to our schools so they know that there's some materials available, and, and it is helpful, and their kids will learn, and it is rigorous, and they're actually going to be better off rather than the old way, which I described as a mile wide and an inch deep.
Well, with the perseverance problems, that was just as hard as a teacher, as it was for the kids. was for the kids. Because I'm so used to them asking me a question, and I answer it. So it was really hard for me to take a step back and be like, they would ask me a question, and I'd be like, you know, I don't know. But then after I did it for a few minutes, it was kind of fun. So just like, learning how to facilitate, instead of just be the knowledge base in the room. We do have open house next week, and I'm actually going to describe my perseverance problem-solving days, so that I don't, you know, when the kids go home that night and are like, my teacher wouldn't answer any questions, I don't know how to do this problem. You know, so they have a little bit of background as to why that's going on, because otherwise, you would have an uprising against that. So I think that that's important, our teachers talking to our parents about that. But I mean, whatever I write up next week, I would be more than happy to send it to Melissa, and, you know, she can put it on the math website, or-
I just think if there's some resources available for schools, that would be helpful. Because truly, that's how we get the message out, is through our parents, and that's one school at a time.
I agree.
But thank you for your work, and we appreciate the update.
We're, actually, we're currently working on that.
Great.
With NACE, for every content area for parents specifically.
Great, great. Thank you.
Deana Horst.
Thank you. And I think it's really fun to see you all again. I had the opportunity to attend in Abilene, and I was very impressed with what I was seeing and what I was hearing. And I, I didn't just go to one place, I kind of floated. And I ended up in spending probably more time in the administrative focus, because they were kind of getting an overview of all of it. But I also got to dissect flowers and draw pictures of flowers, and, so, we're back to doing things that really make kids excited about learning science, for example. Doing, I think they'll be more excited about doing math, because of the challenging things you're, you're asking them to do. And my question is, how many districts actually have had teachers participate? Because I think that, that may be some of our, our issue, is that not all districts have, have had leadership or teachers participating. And therefore, they're kind of out on an island, and they don't have kind of the support that you have given to those who have attended. So I think that's something that we may want to take a look at, and see where we need to do some shoring up. And just a parting, kind of a little parting statement, when you're talking about perseverance, I saw a statement about perseverance that I thought was really excellent, and might help students like my son, who was an athlete and didn't think academics should matter. That's been a few years ago, but that perseverance in academics is like sweating in an athletic game.
Yep.
So, I thought that was pretty cool. It spoke to me, because I wished I would have had that statement in mind, when I tried to get him to understand the importance of his academic world as well. But thank you very much for all that you do, and keep up the good work, and we look forward to hearing more about what, what you're doing in your classrooms.
Thank you. I think to answer your question, Deana, we've had roughly about 125 school districts that have participated, and throughout the four years, we've probably trained, or participant-wise, there've been about 8,000 teachers right now. It's really hard, you, a lot of times, it's the repeats that come back. And we still know that there's a lot of school districts out there that have not even come to any academy whatsoever, but we have a lot of repeats, and some of those who have attended, sometimes they only send one teacher, which is really a shame, because really, it's the collaborative work, particularly around with these standards, that are really important right now.
Right. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your work, and your effort, and your joy that you bring to the classroom. I think we need more joy, actually. And that's one of the complaints I have about Common Core, is it generates this anxiety over testing and things like that, when really, we should just take a step back and enjoy what we do as educators, at least, that's my theory. I also have a theory that I've shared with my fellow board members and the legislature, that you don't necessarily have to go to teachers' college to be a great teacher. I happen to know that, that's a fact, it depends on what you're teaching, and what age, and so forth. So my question to you is, especially for the intermediate and early grades, early primary, what are those elements of pedagogy that you feel are absolutely essential to those teachers to bring to bear on their charges, that beyond expertise in the subject matter? And we're not talking about technical courses in secondary school, because you won't be able to sell me that you can teach physics without knowing the physics. You won't be able to sell that to me today. But early primary, intermediate, what are those elements of pedagogy that are, that are essential? Could you help answer that for me?
Being the fourth grader, I believe I'm resident here. I have also taught kindergarten and first grade, and this will be my 19th year of teaching, so I've got some experience in elementary. I think it's really important to understand higher-level questioning and higher-level thinking skills. That's pretty much what it's all about. You've got to be able to facilitate those students, and guide them into their learning, as opposed to providing them with all the information. I really think it's important, if we look at kind of a Montessori setup, where we provide students with what they need, and the tools, and we watch what they're doing with them, we ask them questions to guide them onto the course that they need to be on, we ask them questions to push them further, because as you know, we have students that come to us from this end of the spectrum to this end of the spectrum. So while I teach fourth grade, I have eighth-grade readers, and I have second-grade readers. And so, I think, especially at the elementary level, really being able to look at the whole child, and being able to push students, facilitate, and ask higher-level thinking question skills, so that they get what they need.
And no strategies to, to use with them as well? Are there other questions?
Ken.
Well?
Ken.
Oh, Ken Wellard, sorry, Ken, about missed it.
Thank you. I don't have so much a question, it's just an observation. A lot of the resistance, as you all know, to Common Core is based more on fear than it is fact. And, and there are a lot of myths out there, that I've spent quite personally, a lot of time trying to combat. But there are some things that are said, and a couple of things I heard here today, that I think have the potential to foment that kind of discomfort and resistance. One of them was, and I, I had to miss part of this, because I have a little crisis at home I'm dealing with, so I'm not sure which one of you it was, but I heard say that, and I think it had to do with math, that there's not one right answer. Well, I think I may know what you mean by that, maybe I don't know what you mean by that. But it seems to me, and I'm not a mathematician, but their math's pretty concrete, when you're, and it's an effort to find the right answer. And I understand there being different processes, in order to get to the right answer, and different ways of doing it, but to say that there's not, that there's more than one right answer to a math question, it just sets people off. So, so I don't know if you have a comment about that, or how, how do you avoid that causing problems?
Okay, so the way that I would explain that with the situation that I gave, it was actually about students remembering how to do proportions. And the reason why there's not one right answer, there was a ballpark answer. The ballpark was around 33, 34, 35. But my body is not in the same proportion as yours. So if you were to do the problem, you might be off by half an inch than me, but we would be pretty close. So there would be a ballpark answer for that type of problem-solving situation. And most of the kids did come in with, within like, one to two inches of each other. But, because I had 33 and a half, and she had 34, we would think we had the wrong answer, but we didn't. So I guess-
Well, I can under, that, that seems to me that you're not asking for an answer.
Right.
But you're asking for an approximate, or an estimate.
Right.
So that's a little different than what I was shooting at. And I have one more concern regarding the requirement, that if I, some kids are just very, very well-wired for math. I have a grandson who is just, he just amazes me at how quick he is. But I worry about his being required to take the time to write down the steps of his process for getting there. I haven't discussed this with him, so, I mean, I haven't heard any complaint about it, but I worried about that turning off some kids who, who are naturally inclined to math. So, you know, so if a kid can get the right answer to a complex problem quickly, and then to not get credit for that answer, because he couldn't adequately explain the process, seems, I don't know if that's what happens, but I would hope that does not happen. And this is a kid that I'm talking about, who just told me a week or so ago, that he decided he wanted to be a math teacher. I want to be a pro footballer or basketball player, but I want to be a math teacher, too. So that's a step in the right direction. So, I don't, I don't want, we go to great lengths to individualize learning for kids. At the same time, we try to box everybody into the same mold. So if every kid, regardless of how quickly he can come up with the answer, has to do, go through this process, seems to me that's a kind of reversion back to the, to the mold.
Right. Well, I mean, within math, we're teaching them all the different tools, but on a test, I'm not going to say, you have to use this tool to find this answer. So if they find one tool that they really like, and a lot of times, there is a best tool to use, but you could probably use any of them, or a variety of them, I should say. But within math, if your, did you say it's your grandson? If he discovered the shortcut, or the trick, so to speak, that wouldn't necessarily be wrong, we're just not going to show the kids the trick at the very beginning, because we want them to understand where the math came from.
Okay with that, yeah.
And then, you asked another question. Oh, the process part. I'm making my kids justify one problem a day, but it's one problem, it's not 30. And at the very beginning, I, I understand you've never done this before, and honestly, I've not really graded a whole lot of stuff like that before. So at the beginning, it's really about practice. And then the next day, when they come in, I'm going to have one person tell what they put, and then, you know, we're just going to discuss it. And so, they're not necessarily going to be counted off for that, because they're just learning how to learn that way. This is new to them, just as much as it's new to us. So, I mean, I would hope that a teacher wouldn't be like, oh, it's the first day of class, I've never taught you how to justify before, but you didn't explain it correctly. So, and if they could show me the math, and explain in their own words, I don't think there's a wrong way to explain it. Everybody's going to have a different explanation for why they did what they did.
Okay. Well, that question that I posed, is the kind of a question that many people are going to have, and be concerned about.
Right.
That's just what I'm trying to illustrate, okay?
I agree.
There was one other point, and part of the video, there, I think it was fourth grade, and the students were asked about solving world hunger, or whatever it was, and how they would use math in Kansas to properly distribute resources, or something like that. Now, I don't know if you've thought about it, but that is a question that would just set some people off, big time. And, and it's not necessary, but, but, well, I think the standards are, are good, and probably better than what we had. The way they're implemented, or the way it's presented to people, has tremendous amount of effect on how well they're received, and how much resistance is out there. So, we just have to be very, very careful about how this is done, I think.
I agree with you. And in reference to your first question, at an elementary level, that justification is going to be verbal. And so the kids are talking about it, well, how did you get that answer? What did you do? What did you use? What tools? And so, they will eventually have practiced that, as we leave these standards in place. And that's going to make a difference when they get to the writing component. Right now, the students that are in middle school and high school have to jump into that, and that's just an unfortunate side effect of shifting standards. But I know my first grader, who's going into second grade, for two years now, she's been talking about math. So not only does she solve the problem, but she says, yeah, and this is what such-and-such did, or this is how we did it. And so that vocabulary is already building, which will hope take away some of that scary, I have to now write about it, because kids don't like to write, we know that, that's a, that's not a favorite subject. Also, the document that you were looking at was a resource for teachers to use, and it was designing questions for them to use in discussion with their colleagues. And that one there was actually a high school group that was doing that, I was just facilitating. So those would not be things that I would take back to my fourth grade classroom. But as we've hit on so much today, I really think it's about communicating clearly with parents. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you so much for giving time in your summer to work on this very important project. We're all pleased with the progress that's being made, and you're part of making that happen. Scott Smith is about ready to update us on state assessments.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the good news is, we have a brief update today. I think, in light of what was a host of really valuable information about the College Career Standards and the Summer Academies. And you do have in front of you, an assessment update, which passed out over lunch. And we'll start with some, some good news. The Career Standards and Assessment Services team has added a new assistant director, who is seated behind me, Ms. Beth Foltz. I told her that I would have a poem, or a song, or something, but I failed miserably, so instead, I have a brief bio. Congratulations to Beth, who will lead the CSAS team, Career Standards and Assessment Services team, in its large-scale assessment efforts. She's a wealth of institutional experience and knowledge in accountability, educational policy and assessment. She's been working single-handedly, heading up the large-scale NAEP assessment for the, for the past few years. Thirteen in the agency? Fourteen years in the agency, so it's wonderful to have a person who can hit the ground running. And we have been without an assistant director for a while, 12 months. So, I'd like to, maybe I'll, she's refusing to stand, why don't you, for just a minute? So she'll, I may want to direct a couple of questions to her. So then, moving on, a couple of things have happened since this board's decision, previous month, to not to, I'll say, produce assessment scores. And so what I wanted to do was make you aware of the kind of seriation, or, or the cycle of events. After this, after this board made a decision, a recommendation with regard to assessment results, scores from this past spring's assessments, we, as an agency, then went about notifying the U.S. Department of Education and all of those necessary entities. And so the first slide that you have in front of you, Melissa Tillman and Charlotte Bogner from the State Department of Education, thank you, thank you, Beth. "Traveled to NCS Stats Conference in Washington, D.C., and notified staff from the following offices of the Kansas, of the Kansas Decision Regarding Assessments." I'll apologize in advance, my hard drive crashed Friday, so I'm still recovering from that. And I did this on, bound to be errors in here, I did this on a, on an iPad. So, present were the Office of Migrant Education, the Office of Special Education Programs, the Office of Vocational Adult Education, Office of Civil Rights, the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education, EdFAX Partner Support Center, and then also, staff working with Kansas on the Flexibility Waiver were present. So I know that this, this board asked very specifically, previous month, what's next? How will we notify the field? How will we notify the field? How will we go about doing what we need to do from a national perspective to make certain what this board's decision was? So I think this was two weeks ago? Two weeks ago this trip took place, so I thought it's the kind of thing that we would want to make you aware of. And I should also add, they were very, very understanding, very, very supportive, and didn't really push us on the decision at all with regard to any whys, or should you have done this? All very, very supportive. So I think Melissa and Charlotte came back very pleased. Also, August 5th, another thing that I thought we needed to update you on with regard to the consequences of the decision. The Kansas Assessment Advisory Council met August 5th in Salina. Again, there are thirty-six districts represented on the council. And what did we discuss? Well, they provided feedback to the Center for Educational Testing and Evaluation. CETE was present, as they are regularly, on the design of the 2014 reports. We talked about what we will be providing to districts in place of actual scores. So we got some very valuable feedback from the CAC on that. And I think this may get back to Ms. Beth wrote me a note during the last presentation. Ms. Cobble asked about help in messaging, I will say, the Common Core. I think there are some things that we can do with the released items that might be able to help. Very often, I would agree, the conversations that are about college core-ready standards are only incidentally about them. They may be about the role of the federal government, or some quasi-political issue, but they're couched as... Exactly. So what we can do is, I think, is put in the hands of people, this is how we're measuring the content. This is feedback on how students did. This is what we mean when we say a new item type. So it grounds the conversation in content. You can talk about right angles or something, the appropriateness of right angles for a third grader, or some such thing. So I think that's a very valuable piece of information. We also discussed the Fall 2014 Break Kite Day, which we are planning to do this year. And if anyone is interested in more information or scheduling about that, that's something that obviously everyone is very supportive of. And then we discussed the Listening Field Test. So I'll be very frank, this is a little bit difficult for me insofar as this issue is kind of a gray area. This was not an action item for the board, but it came up as a result of some discussions with CETE and the CAC. We've talked in the past about putting Kansas' footprints on the assessment and sort of doing what we know to be best with regard to assessment policy and protocol. Well, conversations take place, and lo and behold, a few people had what we think is a really good idea. So we discussed this at the CAC, and we all agreed, well, it absolutely needs to go to the board because at this point, it's only an idea. And I'm not entirely certain that it requires a vote because it doesn't change our waiver, it doesn't change the status of anything, but it is absolutely something that we wouldn't go forward with unless and until this body evaluated the idea. As you will recall, the plan was to introduce listening items this next spring. It's a new construct being measured, and it's a new item type that requires bandwidth, and it requires, you know, headphones, so to speak. And so this is just sort of underscoring here what the general plan was. The fall of 2014, we will have Break Kite Day. In spring of 2015, we'll administer the summative assessments in English Language Arts and Mathematics. Now, the plan that we were discussing was, in the spring of 2015, what if, I should have added, assessments would have additional mathematics performance assessment items added, but would otherwise be the same as administered in 2014. In other words, what we're trying to do is to control how we introduce this new thing called listening, to try to be as deliberate as we can and careful as we can, given the challenges that we experienced this past spring. Because if we didn't, you know, what everyone agreed is, what we really want is some success. So we'll be introducing... Everyone's confident that we've got the denial-of-service attack under control, but we're also a little wary about the fact that the assessment that we are introducing in the spring will have these new pieces and parts to it. So one option we have is, in the fall of 2015, listening items would be piloted in a state sample in order to gather necessary data. This is the kind of thing that we would do if we were completely operating on our own. In other words, just creating assessment schedules, you know, sort of ignoring or bracketing the time in a U.S. Department of Education timeline. This wouldn't change anything for us. It wouldn't alter our overall timeline. It wouldn't put us at cross purposes with the U.S. Department of Education. All it would do would be pull the listening section out of the larger spring assessment offered next spring, make a smaller assessment footprint that we could control very carefully, and then in the spring of 2016, that would be added. So again, if we looked at the benefits of this, it would eliminate introducing a new assessment variable in 2015 immediately after the DDOS period in 2014. It allows Kansas schools additional instructional time to prepare, excuse me, for an assessed construct, listening, provides a more gradual timeline for districts that may still be experiencing bandwidth challenges. Again, it just pushes a little bit of this back so that there's a little bit of breathing room. At least, that was sort of the way the Assessment Advisory Council thought of this. So again, listening would be introduced in the fall of 2015 and assessed for the first time in a complete, quote-unquote, "complete" assessment in the spring. So I think that's all I had. So again, we didn't necessarily bring this forward with the idea that this body would necessarily vote on, although entirely, we're not wedded to the idea, but at the very least, we needed to make you aware in that, A, it has full support of the Assessment Advisory Council, and we do think it's the kind of thing that would help schools as they move And that is the extent of my presentation today. So if there are questions?
Scott, it was my understanding that the purpose of administering the test in the way we did this year was to provide data for the CETE to analyze to determine which items were valid and which ones weren't.
That's absolutely correct.
But it sounds like the very same test will be given again next spring, from what you said. So the purpose... When would that test be revised to throw out items that aren't good?
Question.
Do you understand my question?
I do.
I think the test that was administered this past spring, right now, they are evaluating which ones were not, I don't want to say valuable, did not measure what was intended.
Exactly.
So, right, so next spring, it'll be that test again, minus the ones that...
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay, that was a misunderstanding on my part. I thought from what you said, it was going to be the very same one again.
No, I'm sorry, no.
Okay. Thank you.
It will be minus those items that did not discriminate and all those things that items did.
I'm glad I clarified that for myself. Sally Cobble.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've got two questions. On the piloting of the listening, is that listening skills on how well we listen? Or is that listening to the test to be read to us so we can answer the question?
It's listening skills. You would be listening to, I'll just say, an essay or some, and answering questions about that. But a couple of things along those lines, a couple of things that we will be able to do in the future. So for example, all of the directions of the assessments will be tagged, which means they'll have behind them an oral component. So that it might be the case in some districts that we say, when I proctor this exam, there will be a human being there reading all of the directions to the students. Other districts may say, for any number of good reasons, resources, for example, that, no, 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 we want to take advantage of the fact that kids can put in their earphones and have the directions allowed. So we don't need that human component proctoring it. So this year, the directions will be ready to go. So for example, the schools that want to, in this coming spring of 2015, want to test their bandwidth and use their new earphones and all of that for the directions, they can absolutely do that. It would be listening to an essay, for example, or some snippet of history, and then responding to questions. That's the part that would be contained to a pilot and then delayed to the following fall.
And when you say a pilot, are you talking about just some schools instead of statewide?
Yes. It would not be close to volunteers, but what we could do at that point is, as we have for years, go into the state and decide who we really need to participate. It also wouldn't have to necessarily be mandatory. I mean, if a district were to say, hey, we really would rather not participate in the pilot, would rather try it for the first time in the spring, it's difficult sometimes in certain districts because of their demographic nature, we really need them to participate, not unlike NAEP. But that's some flexibility that we would have.
Okay. I want to go back to the bandwidth.
Yes. I had a feeling.
I know. I keep bringing this up. I have this idea, and I want you to tell me if I'm not... I really need to know if I misunderstand this, okay? Because I don't want to keep bothering you guys with this.
No, no.
If I totally misunderstand. It's my understanding, before the legislators changed some availability to CANED, a lot of my schools did not have trouble with bandwidth. It's when they removed that CANED, and no longer could get internet through CANED, that a lot of my schools started having to look for different internet providers, and those internet providers don't have enough bandwidth for them. Is this something that we should be looking at and go back and ask the legislature to relook at their decision on the CANED? Or has that been too many years? Or is this a dollar amount issue that we need to be asking the legislature to look at since we developed our own assessments, and they really encouraged us to do that? Would that be part of the financial issue of the assessments?
Well, with regard to an appeal to the legislature, to reinstitute, I guess, CANED, that's not really something that I'm in a position to speak to. I can confirm, however, that it is indeed the case that districts are working with individual providers. The other thing I would add to the conversation is that even though this may be a struggle for some districts, sort of easy for me to say in the ivory tower of State Department of Education at Topeka, but it does force districts to evaluate whether they are getting what they are paying for. And that's what we are hearing, is that districts in the past have not perhaps applied the kind of scrutiny that they should to, hey, because there's different, there's download speed, there's upload speed. Very often, the differential between my ability to upload data, because schools don't upload to the extent that they download, there can be really crazy differentials there. When the new assessments, they are going to want to upload some information down the road. So if there's a silver lining, I guess, and I know I'm not doing a good job answering the question.
I'm understanding what you're saying, though.
It's that it's forcing schools to really understand what it is they have and what they're paying for, and holding providers accountable for that. We just released last week a confirmation of the kilobytes per second, the speed that they will need, and it's broken down to how many students do you have taking a test at the same time? And it can be, exactly as you said, a dicey issue for some districts, but it's also difficult for us because it's often unique to a provider.
Right. And I think that was why it was so valuable if we could have tested that kite before those tests were given, because, you know, some of the providers aren't even providing enough of what they should be providing. And I don't know if that's because we haven't been, but you know, when you've got hospitals on it and you've got more than just the school system on these providers, some of those providers aren't very realistic on what communities really need. And that's what I'm running into. It's becoming an economic development problem for towns and not just for school systems. And so I don't know how to approach... I guess I'm trying to think how to help some of my communities, and I'm not sure how to do that.
Thank you. But I'm not wrong in my thinking.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very quickly here, I support your plan, you know, and I think you're right. We need a win. We need to make this work, and we'd be fighting devils from the past and problems of the past while we're moving to the future during the listening. And I do believe that this does give us an opportunity to assess, you know, bandwidth and utilization of that bandwidth within schools, not just are they getting what they paid for, but do they really understand how much bandwidth they need, you know? But the last part is, is that, you know, the listening part and the other adaptive processes we'll be using in the future, we need to be really cautious about bringing them on so that doesn't become the argument not to do, that the assessment is terrible, when it's really not the assessment. And this year, we had so many variables that impacted negatively upon the testing time that we need a good testing season next year to establish that confidence to move forward into new and adaptive types of assessment techniques. So I support it 100%.
Thank you.
Deana Horst.
I would support most of what you have anyway on this list. I would agree with what Jim said, that we need a win. And I think the field needs to feel confident that there won't be problems when they are assessing, when they set an assessment date. My concern has to do with one of your statements that says, it's the very last one, that on there, provides a more gradual timeline for districts that may still be experiencing bandwidth challenges, but yet we're going to allow piloting so will they all know that they've got that problem? And so I guess I'm trying to weigh whether a pilot's going to ferret out those concerns that may show up the next year.
I think it's an excellent point. And all I would say is, it's very possible that in a pilot situation, that a school doesn't, that a school not learn what it needs to learn with regard to bandwidth challenges if it has them. One of the things we will be doing with Break Kite Day is messaging the heck out of what the requirements are. We'll also be hitting that hard in this year's Fall Assessment Conference. Again, this is sort of a regrettable way to think about it, but the other issue, or if there's any fortunate aspect of last spring's administration problems... of administration problems, is, is that it made most schools hyper-aware of, of the hardware they have in the building, their firewalls, their bandwidth issues. So, I think what we're trying to do is leverage that, so that when they come into, uh, this next school year, A, we're dead-set on providing them an opportunity for success, uh, and we want to be crystal clear as to what needs to be in their building with regard to, able to have that success. So, I don't have a good answer to your question with regard to, I mean, one way to, to solve that, I guess it would be to mandate, um, that's sort of a hard word, would, would be not to use a pilot, but to run the entire state through, uh, a listening section, or a listening section in the fall. Um, that, that, that sort of runs, runs somewhat counter to what we thought was a benefit of this, a smaller footprint. But we can absolutely get the message out that any school that has any question at all about its bandwidth, join the pilot. Because, again, it would be a random stratified sample, but it would be certainly open to any district that would want to, you know, if, if Shawnee Mission, for example, is not, wasn't named as a pilot school, we could easily add them. Uh, and suggest, I, I think KU, uh, in order, in order to, well, with regard to their ability to troubleshoot and know some of the problem areas across the state, I'm not certain that they're in a position to do that. They, they would know those districts that struggled to complete. Now, whether or not that was a bandwidth issue, you know, it's likely not to be. It was a denial of service issue. Um, but we can absolutely help get the message out.
Okay. That makes me feel a little more comfortable. So, thank you. Other questions?
Well, thank you very much for the update. Well, Deana and Jim, would you rather do your presentation before the break or after the break? Aren't you after? I like that idea.
We'll take a break until, uh, 3:15. I think we'd better move forward with our agenda before things get out of hand here with the toys. So, um, we have, Deana and Jim, they're going to give us more information about the innovative district bylaws. Oh, we're going to act on, yeah, we're going to act, that's an action item, so...
Brad.
Oh, Brad. Brad was, okay. You were there.
You have a copy of the bylaws in your packet. Hopefully, you've taken a look at those. Changes that were recommended at the last meeting were inserted. Don't ask me to remember those changes right now, but, um, we took those to heart, brought them back for discussion, and, uh, basically upgraded the bylaws with your recommendations. We've had a couple of, um, bylaw recommendations already, in terms of clarification of some membership issues, in terms of, of Article III, I believe, uh, moving it up and making it aware, and the original Article I of membership, that would delineate those exceptions to membership. And we'll, we'll do that. That made sense. You're reading it in, in its, in, where it's congruent, consistent, makes a difference. And all it is, is, it identifies membership in Article I and Article III, it then, it tells about the exemptions to membership. Is that right?
It's actually membership eligibility.
Eligibility, correct.
And it's Section II, and at the end of Section II, we thought probably that we needed to add, and Section IV behind Article III, Section III. So, which is, Section III is the membership application. So, that districts know right up front, section, their point, it's pointed to them all of the, the things they need to consider, whether they could be accepted for membership or not. So, and that was a, a suggestion from, from Sally.
Well, I thought she had another
She does.
simple change as well, and I think we need to be specific about what the changes are, so we know what we're voting on.
She does. But I'm just telling you specifically what that membership one is.
Okay. So, that was one change?
That's one. And then, the next one is, it's on page three, um, which would be Section VI, members of the executive board. And, uh, Sally also had a concern about whether there would be confusion about what chair, the chair of what?
In that last sentence.
In that last sentence. So, we would clarify that by saying, the chair of the Coalition of Innovative Districts.
Okay.
So, so that clarifies, I checked with Sally, and she agrees that, that would fix her concerns. So, if anyone else has concerns, we'll listen to those as well.
John Bacon.
Um, I was just wondering if you had a chance to compare it to the statute that was passed, or if you had Scott or somebody, um, review it and just compare the two, make sure it was...
I took the statute and went through the statute and made sure that everything that was in statute is in the bylaws.
Okay.
And that's a lot of fun, by the way.
Oh, I know.
Because...
But as far as the second pair of eyes, anyone else?
It's spread. The way statutes are written, they're not written like bylaws are, so...
Well, is it too much to ask to have somebody that's an attorney review it and just make sure? I mean...
Have you done that?
I'd be happy to do so. I have not been asked to do so, so...
Just our in-house could do it. Scott, please. Yeah. And it's, and it's not something we need to worry about, not today, but, you know, if he has a chance to look at it and review the two, he can bring a red flag, anything, and say, hey, we messed up here.
So, John, are you suggesting that we delay the vote on it until after it's been reviewed?
No, no, I wasn't. I think we're okay. I just wanted to make, you know...
So, you'd be okay with approving it, with the understanding that if there are any discrepancies, those will be corrected?
Yeah, so we can fix our...
I think that's a good suggestion.
And I, having dealt with bylaws in other organizations, there's always something you find. So, I don't think you'll ever see this being as a permanent document. So, it will, it will change from time to time, probably very slightly, but, but it, and we'll need to respond to any additional legislation that may take place in regard to it as well. So, that's, or anything that maybe we, we decide to do as well, so...
That's a good suggestion, John. Thank you for bringing that forward. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. I just had a question on page seven, because it, when reading over this, it just brought to mind that I didn't know, uh, Article VII, where it's, Section I, where it's talking about the State Board of Education, uh, shall provide any assistance to the board, uh, in writing applicant, uh, grant applications. And so, my mind went to, do we have someone, uh, on staff here that's the grant-writing expert, or does it just go to each?
Mr. Brad.
We have several staff members that are, have been involved in a lot of grant writing, um, and they're very good. I wouldn't say that they're specialists, but I think this was more of saying, whenever they're looking at writing grants, we would lend any assistance that we can, in either supports, information, including writing language.
Well, I was just curious, it was just a curious statement, because I know some districts have a grant person, and I just didn't know if here at the agency, we had one person that
We don't.
specializes.
I, I think this statement is really from the statute that specifies that, uh, the State Board is to provide local boards with advice and assistance when they're applying for the innovative district, um, to be an innovative district. So, that's what that statement's really all about. But it's good to know that there's other things that are available, too, from a grant-writing, um, the grant-writing possibility, so...
Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, uh, Deana actually made the point I was going, going to make. I was looking at Article VII, Section I, and I didn't read that as applying for a grant, but actually applying for permission to operate as an innovative district, or a grant of authority. It's not actually writing a grant for money of any kind. So, but I think that's the point you made. I was talking, didn't hear part of it.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Then, do I hear a motion that we approve the bylaws, uh, for the Innovative District Board? Carolyn Campbell. Moved by Carolyn Campbell, Sarah Second, seconded by Steve Roberts. Is there discussion? Then, all in favor, raise your right hand. I see nine hands, all opposed. You abstaining? Uh, the vote's nine-zero, with Sally Cobble abstaining, and Mark Ferguson will review the bylaws and, uh, report to us at our next meeting, I suppose.
If you want me to, but I think, but Scott, Scott would, would do that. I'd be happy to do it, or Scott.
Or Scott, either way. I guess you two can decide.
And actually, if, if they find something that need is missing, if, um, they get it to us by August 23rd, we may be able to just vote on it and get it fixed. Um, I think it's important for all of you to know, at nine o'clock on August 23rd, we begin hearing from the districts that have been approved by us to come before us, um, to, um, be, hopefully, um, I guess you could say, inducted, given the authority to operate, um, the, after, after they, they actually have to come here, we give them the opportunity to come to the State Board and, um, be given, then we give them the authority to operate. But we started out with six additional districts. We now have Kansas City, Hugaton, Blue Valley, Santa Fe Trail. There also had been Sterling and Seaman, and they have chosen to withdraw. So, um, if you're interested and want to listen in, you're, it will be, I think you can hear it as well. Um, you can attend at Salina, um, Smoky Hill Service Center in Salina. So, we'd welcome you to come in and visit us in Salina, if you'd like. So, be there in person, or I think if need be, we can also set up a conference call, if some of you would like, for example, Janet, your Kansas City folks, if you'd like to listen in when they present, and that sort of thing, that you and, uh,
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe Trail. So, save you a trip to Salina, even though we'd love to see you. Okay?
The 23rd of August.
Twenty-seventh.
Is it the 27th?
Twenty-second.
Oh, it's the 27th. I've got the wrong date written down on my paper. The 23rd, something else.
Just as much fun.
Janet, before we move on, I wanted to clarify, was your motion on that going to include the line about having legal counsel review for any discrepancies or not?
I didn't think it was part of the motion, but
No, that's fine.
Kind of part of the follow-up.
Direction for follow-up. It's just, it's just a follow-up type thing.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Jim and Deana, for all the work you've done and will be doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, Jay, Scott has already been here to pass out our toys. Now, what do we do?
Allowing me the opportunity to come and give you a little update on career and technical education. Um, if you, if you don't like what I say, feel free to fire that ball at me, just one at a time, though, please, so I can kind of shield myself. But, um, so, I want to start with this, the flower chart. We really like flowers in Kansas. Um, but it's always important to, to go through this to understand how we're organized structurally in Kansas with the career and technical education. You can see the, um, the colored headings, like Business Management Administration, that is a cluster. We have 16 of those. Those 16 career clusters align with specific, specific occupations. And then, underneath Business Management and Administration, you see Business Entrepreneurship and Management, which is a specific pathway. So, we have 16 career clusters that are more broad, and then we have 36 bulleted pathways on that, on that diagram, that are more specific in nature. Um, so, this is, this is to just ground us all in, in how we're structured in CTE in, in Kansas. Um, okay, what I want to look at is from last year, the 13, 14 school year, how many approved pathways we had by cluster. So, I'll have the, the 16 career clusters up here, and it'll show you how many pathways in each of those. So, for last year, for instance, we had 361 agriculture pathways. Agriculture's a cluster, but then we had 361 specific pathways, like, uh, ag, animal systems or plant systems. And that, uh, those are our 16 career clusters. Last year, we had an increase from the year before of around 100 pathways across the state. Um, are there any questions on that? That's a That's a lot of pathways, but that's a good thing. That's a good thing. Yes? Sure. We do, our team of consultants. So, we have, we have, we have cluster consultants. So, we have Peggy Torrens, Kirk Haskins, our team upstairs. They, they are content-specific to their pathways. And so, a school, Sterling High School, applies to the state for a biochemistry pathway. They send that pathway application to us through our Pathways Data System, and then the consultant who oversees that pathway or cluster reviews the pathway application. It goes through their eyes, it goes through my eyes, and then it goes back to the school. That's our, that's our pathway application approval process.
Okay, who approves the original status of that?
If you're talking about the standards of a pathway, we have a business industry group called the Kansas Advisory Council for Career and Technical Education. Each of the 16 career clusters that you see there, we have a business industry rep from across the state, and we take to them, after we, we go through, when we, and I'll show you here in a second, but when we review a cluster, to update that cluster to business industry standards, we convene a group of secondary, post-secondary, and business and industry to take a look at the standards in that pathway and cluster to make sure that they're current. And then the recommendations from that group go to the KACCTE, and that board, that committee approves those clusters and pathways. Sure. I'm sorry.
Dina Horst, oh, you're busy reading. I wondered, clusters, how, how those were arrived at, or that they were arrived at by the...
This was the national model.
It's national.
About four or five years ago, when there was a, there was a national push to transform vocational education to career and technical education, the national, it's N-A-S-D-C-T-E-C. I think I got all that out, but it's the National Association of State Directors developed the, the career clusters model. And what you see here is the 16 career clusters were the original 16 from that model.
Okay. So, if someone is wanting to set up another pathway, they need to fit under one of those clusters.
That's correct. That's correct.
And if they don't?
Well, schools are free to set up whatever career pathways that they see fit. Now, if they choose to go with, with an approved pathway through Kansas, they apply for it and they approve, they get it approved, then they receive weighted funding for the courses in those pathways. The technical and the application level courses are, are weighted-funded. But schools are free to, to set up quality career pathways, and they do. We have some schools that, that don't apply for pathways, maybe for areas that we don't recognize in our model.
So, they just don't get the, the weighted funding?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Jay, I can think of a good example of that. You remember a couple years ago, the utility company came to our meeting and said there was a real need for linemen, or I don't know whatever the job was, and was encouraging the department to develop some kind of a pathway. I don't know whatever happened with that, but that's an example of something that didn't quite fit into our framework.
Right. And, and just so everybody's clear, for an occupation or a pathway to fit into our model, it has to meet the high demand, high wage, and high skill criteria set at the national level. So, not, even though we've got, if really, it's, it's hard to find an occupation that's not represented up there, but if you do, it's probably because it doesn't fit one of those three criteria. Now, to get back to the energy, because that's a, we're hearing a lot from Westar, KC P&amp;L, about setting up an energy pathway. There are new jobs in energy, you know, that, there are new occupations. I mean, the top 10 jobs right now, the United States didn't even exist in 2004. So, we've got to be flexible enough to allow those conversations to take place, to, to really look at, do we need to set up other pathways? And, and we're actually starting a pilot this year around an energy, energy pathway. Okay, so, last year, we did have an increase in the number of pathways. We had an increase, well, we estimate there's going to be an increase of CTE concentrators, so getting to students. Students that earn at least three credits in a pathway, they complete the pathway, we call them concentrators. They concentrate in construction, or they concentrate in biomedical. In 2012-13, we had 7,617 concentrators across Kansas. Now, that could be a junior or a senior. We have juniors that do actually complete a pathway by their junior year. This past year, our estimate is, we don't have the numbers completely firmed up yet. The, the deadline for schools to report their numbers to us is August 15th upcoming. But we estimate over 7,700 students were concentrators last school year. Participants. Participants are students who start in a pathway, they earn one credit in a pathway, maybe the intro course, or getting into that technical level course, but they're showing an interest in one of our pathways. For 2012-2013, 38,718. For this, this past school year, our estimate is 39,500, based on the fact that we have more pathways across the state. Okay, career and technical student organizations, CTSOs, in January, you heard from several, on Citizenship Day, you heard from several CTSO student leaders, great kids, very focused. I'm really happy to look at these numbers. These are our eight identified career and technical student organizations. I didn't write them all out, so you'll have to, have to try and figure out the acronym. But that was 1213. If you look at, these are the specific students who are members. You can see an increase in most of those. A few showed a decrease, but if you really look at it, like DECA and FBLA, those are both business-related CTSOs. DECA went down, but FBLA went up. So, we've got a lot of choices for, for business in Kansas. Our numbers are up. Okay, Senate Bill 155, which I've got to congratulate the board on being behind and really being at the heart of, of getting this bill up and off the ground. Senate Bill 155, it incentivizes, number one, it pays, the state pays the tuition for juniors and seniors who enroll in college-level CTE courses. It also incentivizes industry-recognized credentials that lead to a high-demand occupation. And as you can see, the baseline year is 2012, that was pre-Senate Bill 155. So, in the summer of 2012, when that legislation was signed in, 2013 is the first year of Senate Bill 155. You can see a marked jump in the head count, and that head count is the numbers, the juniors and seniors who are enrolling in college-level CTE courses, paying zero tuition. You would expect those numbers to jump. And then this last year, the numbers jumped again to 8,208 students. Great. It's, it's really, I have yet to hear anybody criticize Senate Bill 155. So, it's, it's going, going well, and we, we expect it to increase those numbers. The number of credentials, the baseline year was 548, pre-Senate Bill 155. And then you can see from 2013 to 2014, almost double. So, we've got many, many more students earning industry-recognized credentials across the state, to the tune of one point, over 1.4 million going out the door this summer to our schools. And you can see also, the number of districts participating is up. Also, I'll make note of that, that last bullet point on the right, the major areas for certifications. Last year, those numbers were very much, you know, I think for, for health, which is basically the CNA, that number was in the 81 to 82 percent range. So, it's good to see that we've still got a lot of CNAs, students earning their CNAs, but we also have construction, manufacturing, automotive, ag, starting to come around. And we're, we're starting to see more schools align their programs with those industry-recognized credentials.
Jay, I believe Ken Willard has a question.
Jay, I noticed on a previous slide, I think there was only one pathway under health. Was it Health Science or?
Yes.
So, is that, CNA is the only pathway?
No, actually, there are, Health Science is, is kind of an anomaly according to our other pathways, because Health Science, it's a cluster, it's also the pathway, and the pathway, the names of the courses, Health Science 1, Health Science 2, Health Science 3. Basically, it's whatever the student is interested in, that health career, they can, they can cover the basic standards for Health Science. And then the student is free to go into a myriad of different occupations related to Health Science. Most do what? They go in, they, they go into CNA. Because honestly, that's, that's really the, the only post-secondary program that high school students can enter into as far as, as a health occupation. Now, they can do CMA, Certified Medical Assistant, they can, they can do that at the high school level as well.
Right.
But I, I think we're, those are just basic courses for a lot of different Health Science occupations.
So, for each of those, 1, 2, and 3, is there a certification at the end of them?
No.
No, they're not?
See, most of the, if you look at the certifications that are out there in health, in Health Science, they are, they're in college earning those certifications.
Okay.
High school students really aren't going to be in a position to earn those certifications.
Okay. Well, thank you. But I'm happy to see some expansion into the other fields as well. I'd like to see that grow even more.
These were the four clusters that were reviewed this year and approved by KACCTE, Architecture, Construction, Education Training, Finance, and Health Science. And as I, Mr. Magnus' question, we talked about the groups that we pull in together, we review the standards, update them, and get those approved. So, also, and again, we're still on 1314, Career Pathways Assessment System, CPAS. We had two operational tests this year. We had the general CTE assessment, which is a summative, hopefully, in the future. It will be a summative college and career-ready assessment. It measures the academic skills of a student, 21st century skills, leadership, and employability. We're very excited about that assessment.
Jay, is that the one that's being developed out of KU?
Yes, CETE is doing the developing.
CETE, okay.
And then we also had a specific, our first operational specific end-of-pathway assessment. So, the general is maybe a junior that's in the middle of a pathway, would sit for the general, but then their senior year or their junior, when they complete a pathway and they're a concentrator, they could sit for the end-of-pathway specific exam. And the first one we have out is comprehensive ag. So, we had several students take those. And again, this is not just Kansas, this is Kansas, Mississippi, and Colorado working with CETE to produce these assessments. Okay, last year, our major projects, we had regional advisory committees. We had one in Wichita around manufacturing, and we had one in Liberal around all pathways. An advisory committee, every pathway, I showed you that, that slide before that showed all the pathways that have been approved. Every one of those, schools have to have an advisory committee made up of three business and industry reps that are related, that work in that, the occupations that pathway leads to. Well, what we found was, a lot of schools across the state, if, if I've got a STEM biomedical pathway in my school, I'm going to be asking the, the people in that community that are involved in biomedical-type work, well, the same three people I'm asking, the other four schools surrounding me are asking the same people. Plus, we, we need to, we need to bring our schools together around a post-secondary institution. So, in Liberal, it made great sense, because the, the people at Liberal High School that sit on advisory committees are also being asked at Rala, at Southwestern Heights, at those schools. So, we bring everybody together. Seward County Community College is there, Business and Industry is there, the local workforce people were there, and over 200 people in April on a school night at Liberal High School. And it was a great, it was a great night. Wichita had a lot of success just around the manufacturing pathway in Wichita. They brought a lot of folks in on a regional advisory committee. We're excited about moving forward with that. We also identify the quality components of a pathway. Everybody's about improving their pathways. These four areas were what, last year, we, we went out and talked to schools, these are the four areas they told us they would like to focus on in their pathways. The partnerships, the physical environment, the instructional practices used by the teacher or teachers in the pathway, and the professional development opportunities for those teachers. All four of those are aligned with the proposed accreditation model criteria for CTE. So, when schools already are aligning themselves with those four, it's already, they're already going to be aligned with the new accreditation model when we get that up and running. So, we feel like that's, we're excited to move that forward this year as well. Okay, this year, we, we already have all our numbers in for approved pathways. We're up 176 pathways from last year. So, we've got more pathways. Great stuff. The, all the bolded clusters have an increase. Ag went down five or six pathways. Health Science stayed the same, and Transportation went down two or three. But every other cluster showed an increase in the number of pathways. We spent some time, the team, and by the way, you know, I spoke about our team of consultants, they really are responsible for these numbers. I mean, they do a great job helping schools set up and, and apply for, and helping with professional development and setting up pathways. So, I want to take a moment to recognize them. But this summer, we sat down and had a retreat. I think they'd call it a workday, not a retreat, but, but we, we came up with, what gets us up in the morning? When we come to work, what are we focused on? And this is what we came up with, to support and empower schools in developing quality pathways that lead students to college and career readiness. I think as vocational education moved to career and technical education, there was a time when, when the CTE team really had to be focused on technical assistance. This is what you need. You need to put, you know, dot the i, cross the t, all those things. We're now in a position with schools, we're, we're ready to support and empower them and move away so much from the, there's still compliance and regulations, we still have that, but we're moving away from that to supporting and empowering schools. When we go out and talk to schools, we, we talk to them, we want to get feedback from what they're doing. They're the ones that are doing the great work. And, and so, we want to highlight those bright spots. And by highlighting bright spots, we're supporting and empowering them in setting up quality career pathways. Okay, there are three goals that we have to achieve our purpose. Quality professional development, develop and sustain partnerships, and review pathway standards to make them relevant, rigorous, and reflective of current business and industry standards. So, this year, with quality professional development, we're focusing on, we've developed a pathway assessment rubric that schools can actually use on their own to assess the current state of their pathways, helps them with strategic planning. And we've gotten a, a lot of requests from the field. They want more technical skill workshops, specific technical skill workshops. We're developing and sustaining We're developing and sustaining partnerships with business and industry through KACCTE, which we really want to get that group involved more. Jana has sat on that committee, and we appreciate her efforts on that committee very much. Leading that committee at times, it's the Jana show. She's telling them how it is, and we love that. So that, we want to continue to grow that group. We want to expand regional advisory committees. And at the post-secondary level, continue to work with the TEA, which is K-Board's version of KACCTE, expand Senate Bill 155, and expand articulation agreements. These are the clusters that will be reviewed this year. So we'll go through that same process. These are the CPAS assessments. These are the specific end-of-pathway assessments that are yet to be developed. We'll be piloting some of these this year with the goal of spring 2016 having all of these ready to go. And I just, I love this slide. College and career-ready through pathways. If you look at, there are four, those four C-words. You know, if a student's involved in a pathway, they can concentrate by completing a pathway, which means they're going to qualify for an articulated agreement. They can go to Washburn and quiz out of the first intro class. They can take early college, they can earn dual-credit courses. You can see that we've got a huge growth in that across the state. They can earn a credential, which means they're a card-carrying member, no one can ever take that away from them, and they can go out and get a job anywhere in the world with that. And they can also be part of a CTSO, where they learn leadership skills, and they do learn leadership skills in those CTSO competitions, performance-based. So I hope, when my two sons graduate, they're, they've got all four of those. I think it's a testament to this board's vision that we have a system set up like this where kids can achieve to this level. And as we move towards college and career readiness, I think those four areas are great targets for all students. And that's it. And I don't know how hot it is in here, but it feels really hot, so. But I'll stand for questions.
Are there other questions for Jay? Gee, you covered it all.
Wow, all right.
Great information. Thank you so much.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Mark.
Did you throw that at him? Do you have a question now, Sally?
No, I was just wondering if we could all throw them.
He thought I'd do it.
Throw them at Ethan.
Just turn around. You're supposed to say something.
Tom was wanting to throw it the whole time.
I'm not strong enough. Okay, next we, next up, we have Dale. And he's going to talk about legislative recommendations and an efficiency study.
While the guys are passing that out, it's all right to throw it at Ethan if you want to, it's okay. Wait till he gets close, though. It's due every day. These are two of the agendas for the Performance and Efficiency Committee. One is in July, one will come up, 18th and 19th. Here we go. And, oh, I thought you might also be interested in knowing what committees the leadership approved and how many meetings was authorized. They tell, they tell them, the committees, whether they can meet and how many times they can meet, and that's a summary of all of them for this year. The other one that Craig's passing out is the, I thought you might be interested, that's the summary of the elections that had races, which we've always passed out at this time.
That's different.
And a little brief update, this time of the year is quite interesting for us. We're running a call about every 10 minutes, and the subject matters very tremendously. All the way from, what do we do with commercial, driving, commercial vehicle taxes to, I'm just thinking about today. What do we happen, we have a budget hearing, and there's no board members available. That's the first one I've ever had like that, it'd bleed. No board members are available the night of a hearing due to a funeral. So, can we just cancel it? No, you can't cancel it. You can start over again, but you just can't up and cancel. So anyway, there's a lot of, transportation's another one. Can we charge that out-of-state, out-of-district kid, whatever? But there's a lot of questions. The other thing I wanted to tell you, as you recall, we visited about this, remember the tax credit scholarship bill that they forgot to fund for us? We got it, it's all out there, all, we designed more than we probably needed to, but we tried to go overboard a little bit on this, and we've got all the forms designed for anything about they want to do. Even some forms that the student, the scholarship-granting organizations would probably do. We want to put continuity, and it's all out on the web, and it's available to anybody that wants to participate in that. We also posted the focus schools and the priority schools, so we tried to get it as complete as we could. The other one thing I'd mention is, a court suit was filed yesterday, and what it boils down to is, can you have more than one subject in a bill? And is there more than one subject in House Bill 2506, which is our appropriation bill, Board of Regents appropriation bill? It's got the tax credit scholarship in it, it's got the removal of tenure from the law, so that was filed yesterday and with the court. We're not a player in that, but it's just mostly whether or not there's more than one subject in a bill. Now, we'll talk about this about every month. Is there any subject matter that the board would like to talk about or consider for the upcoming session? We've got a lot of time to consider that, that is not budget-oriented. Is there any subject matter that any bill that you'd like to do that talk about, discuss at some point in time down the road and make a decision on? We usually vote on that probably about December, if there's anything they want to do. But it's non-fiscal matters, because the fiscal matter's over. The other thing that I might mention, in that way, it's on the fiscal, it's a little bit out of order, but we've had numerous requests laundered through the attorneys for the district, from the district court on the school finance case, wanted different things. So you try to respond to them as quick as you can. The timing wasn't the best, but we made it in good shape, and we got it. They, one of the requests was, they wanted a kind of a report card, so we gave them all the 12-13 report cards for all districts. You know how big that is? And they said, we don't, then the attorney started saying, why don't we narrow this down to some, a certain number of districts? That's their call. We did our part, and that's up to them. So anyway, I just want to see if there's anything you wanted to think about, and if you do, fine. If you don't, we'll get out of here and let you get back to important business, but, and we'll do this about every month, if there's something you want to bring up to talk about.
Jana, well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is an item I would like to have us consider, and frankly, I don't know that we have enough information on it to do it, but I'd like for you guys to maybe do a little research, if you would, for me, to find out if we do. But we've discussed it a few times, the vision, particularly, you know, deaf children, they test for deafness immediately upon birth, which they can do, but they can't for vision. And there's been some discussion about having vision checked more frequently, because even low vision creates problems for children when they enter school. So I don't know if there are other states that have requirements for this or not.
Maybe the first thing we ought to do is take a look at the current law. There is a statute.
Okay.
There's a statute on that and how often they're supposed to check it. Maybe what we ought to do is, next month, take a look at that law and review that. And there's, it's not uncommon in particularly some of the lower-income schools where an optometrist or ophthalmologist will come in and volunteer a day to check kids. And there's different ways of doing it, but there is a statute on that, I believe, and we can.
Well, I just, you know, working with the School for the Blind and the Deaf, you know, all these years, and I, you know, I just, I just started thinking about it. I thought, well, and I'd appreciate that, Dale, if we could have that information and if the board would consider it.
We'll just stick that in next month, and we'd be glad to. Some poor families, it becomes difficult for some that have vision, children that have vision or hearing problems. And it's kind of sad, but I'll never forget the story, and I'll share it with you right quick, but a child over in Windock County, and it was a migrant child. And they, through the migrant money, they took the child to the doctor because he's having trouble hearing. And the doctor checked him out and said, there's a cuckoo burr in their ear. And they made arrangements then to take the child back shortly thereafter, just a few days, wasn't very long at all, to get the cuckoo burr removed in the child's ear. And a lot of tears were shed over that, because that night, they got done with their jobs, so they moved to the next location. And they was really scrambling. The reason I got involved is, they were scrambling trying to find out where that family might have gone, so they could follow up and get the cuckoo burr out of the kid's ear. So sometimes I don't think we always realize some of the challenges they have, but they, but we can look at that statute, because it's very, very important. And we got plenty of time for this, and we appreciate all your words of wisdom.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the determination for focus and priority schools, is it strictly socioeconomic as they look at the subgroups, or is there a racial component from the feds on determining these?
That, the focus and priority school, Brad's probably a better authority on me than on that than I am, but I think it has to do with, did you, did you meet the criteria, you know, under Title I? Yeah, go ahead.
The 33 priority schools were based on student performance in the building of all kids. And who were, what buildings had the lowest performance? No subgroups. The focus schools were the next 66 that had the widest gaps. And the gap was determined, who were your lowest 30% of your kids, regardless of any subgroup? Who were your lowest 30% as compared to a state benchmark? So it was all based on performance, and looked at all kids in the building. Thank you.
You may have picked that up, Steve, but there's 99 schools that are on that list, and we just posted them so that they wouldn't have to go look them up on there, right with the tax credit scholarship program. Good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll try to keep you posted as we go along, and we'll come back next month and try to look over that statute. Be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything you want to do to, you want to boo Ethan or anything like that before he leaves? We've tried to pick on him all we could.
Let it fly. I was ready, but I was afraid I'd hit someone else.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I know you would do that, I would throw it out.
I was ready, but nobody else stood.
I should have told him where I really hit.
Our next item for action is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Sally Cobble, seconded by Jana, oh, Jana Schaefer, I guess. Is there a discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have a unanimous vote on that. And we are just two minutes behind on our agenda today. Can you believe that? It is time to recess until tomorrow. Thank you, everybody.